All right, welcome everybody to the November 20th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting. Appreciate it by being here. We will start with the minutes from our October meeting.
Move for approval.
Stereo, second, motion in second. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity if you want to speak to the Commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and we'll hear your thoughts. If not, we'll move on. All right, I see none, then we're going to move on to our announcements from our staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that there will be a joint Historic Zoning Commission, BOMA, and Plan Commission meeting on December 1st at 4:00 to kind of review the design and compatibility of the Harpers Square project. And I'd also like to announce that you will find, distributed at your desk, number 18 conditions. We inadvertently left that off of the, your original packet.
All right, thank you.
December 1st.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for you guys to submit to us any items that you want to be requested to be on the agenda tonight that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you want to do that, please come forward and we'll consider those. All right, I see none, then we'll talk about the consent agenda. At present, consent agenda is items 2 through 9 and 12 through 19. It's been requested to withdraw 14 and 19, so we'll do that as part of this vote. Are there any other items, audience, staff, or Commission that want a withdrawal from consent? All right, I see none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval as amended.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Then we will move to item number 10, which is Gateway Village PUD subdivision development plan revision 4, touchstone office building, a 21,000 square foot building on 1.45 acres. Staff.
Mr. Chairman, staff is concerned with the proposed architecture of the building. The proposed building does not match the architecture of the existing buildings already constructed in Gateway Village. The architecture looks to be more fitting of a conventional design and more appropriate in Cool Springs than a traditional design area. Staff does not feel that the architecture of the building conforms to the traditional design guidelines of the zoning ordinance, the land use plan, or the Gateway Village pattern book, and staff recommends its approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience other than, other than the applicant that wants to speak to this item? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Michael Heinman, H. Michael Heinman Architects, representing Touchstone Medical Imaging. Glad to have a chance to be up before the Plan Commission again. It's been a while with the new format. We're not here very often, but glad to be here once again. A little bit taken aback by the comment because it was our understanding that the, we were submitting concept plans and we're, we've already submitted a different package of plans with a different set of architectural for the actual site plan approval. What is to be addressed tonight, in our understanding, was how this differed from the original concept as far as the size of the building and the parking layout. The architectural is purely a concept, it's not the final design, and wasn't intended to be. So, coming into this, we thought, we thought this was one of the conditions of approval was to modify the architecture. For that to be disapproval is, is a surprise, first we've heard of that. But, having said that, again, we have already submitted a separate package of architectural plans for a different design that'll be part of the site plan approval. Tonight, we're dealing with just the concept approval. We are in agreement with all the conditions of approval that had been given to us, with one item regarding the site, which Mr. Jared Gray with Civil Consultants will address, but I'll be glad to address anything else regarding the architecture. Again, we did not think that was an issue for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Jared Gray, Civil Design Consultants. Again, we've worked with staff on this particular project. We have site plans that are coming before you, you know, contingent upon approval here of our concept plan soon that will, you know, hopefully take care of any comments you have relative to architecture, again, as a conceptual design. The issue that we have relative to comments, we have one comment, it is listed in section 8F development plan. Applicants shall comply with the access management design guidelines, section 3.3.2.5 of street standards. The proposed driveway at Moore Boulevard has substandard separation from O'Keefe Way and a limiting separation from Lindwood Way. That's something that, if you look at the plan, where we are coming off of the O'Keefe Way there, where we are proposing an access lined up on Moore Boulevard and where it's existing on O'Keefe Way, it made a lot of sense for us in, you know, lining those accesses up on Moore Boulevard. What I'd like to ask is not necessarily indicate that we are in disagreement with that condition of approval, but that the Planning Commission allow us to work with city staff in order to make sure that we have the best design. And if, in fact, having an access on O'Keefe is the only best design that we have available to us, then obviously we would agree with that, but we feel like we can work with city staff and, you know, move forward on this project with the understanding given to them by the Planning Commission to come up with the best design, whether that be an access off of Moore Boulevard as proposed, or whether that be on O'Keefe Way. We ask for your approval. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
All right, thank you. All right, Commission, I'll entertain a motion, get our discussion started.
Motion to approve.
To approve?
To approve. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, motions passed. Second, or proper motion, I should say. Is there any discussion?
I would like a little clarification after Mr. Heinman spoke, because I cannot agree with the way these plans are drawn as far as the concept of the building fitting in with the architecture of the surrounding area. So, does he have an option to, at this point, face disapproval or deferral to work out the plans, or where are we as far as if we pass this, is this the plan that we're passing?
The question is, do we want time to work out the, the design?
I mean, the design.
Yes, I mean, that's, we thought that's what we were doing, because what we were told was the basic concept we were applying for tonight had to do with the size of the building, the parking, the green space, and the massing of the building. The actual architectural design was to be addressed in the site plan. In fact, that's what was discussed in the last meeting with staff. So, for the, for it to be turned down because of the architecture, which we've already said is being modified for their comments, is distressing to say the least. If, if, we certainly would obviously have preferred deferral to being turned down, but of course our preference would be to have the opportunity to continue on the, the schedule that we're on.
All right, Catherine?
Mr. Chairman, we have met with the architect many times. We've talked about our concerns over a lot of meetings. This is a very detailed plan that they're bringing for a conceptual plan in terms of architecture. We've talked about the things that we wanted to see changed, and we were pretty much told that they had, did not intend to change the architecture, that they felt that the architecture was appropriate for the site. That is why staff has requested a denial at this point in time. Now, if there's a misunderstanding, we would be happy to work with them. That was our understanding as we left the last meeting, is there was not an intention to change the plan.
What we were told to do at the last meeting-
Hold on, hold on, let me kind of go through this track. So if, if in this conversation, if we change the motion to include approval of the site plan as submitted, or the development plan as submitted, with the understanding that they'll revise the architecture to fit the context of Gateway, that would be approvable to Gateway, is that an acceptable process to sort of have that happen between the next stages of the project? I guess it's sort of at risk for them, because we could easily say no at that point, because the architecture's not fitting in the character.
And that would be an administrative site plan.
See, that's, that's the thing, it will not come back to us.
But BOMA's going to look at it three times, right?
No.
No.
No, it is.
No, this is an FMPC.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Can you tell me what's wrong with architectural?
The architecture is, it's a beautiful building.
Right.
And all of staff agrees that this is a very well-designed building. We love this building. We love this building for Cool Springs. This building does not, is not compatible with the architecture that's in Gateway, with the pattern book that was approved for Gateway, and with the pattern of Gateway and the type of architecture that's in Gateway. It is a very suburban-looking architecture as opposed to the more traditional architecture that you find in Gateway.
Okay. You go up to the site and look at it, it doesn't blend in at all?
I know, I drove up there again this afternoon, and I, and I'm, and sometimes I'm not as, I don't feel as strongly about appearance as some other people do, but it really doesn't fit at all. I mean, it's, but, 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 let me say, there are also some other things too about this access, you know, I guess that's something else that could be worked out with staff. That was another condition that, that concerns me, and I don't know whether that just came up, was, was that a recent, it looked like it was-
Tonight, I mean, yesterday we received the comments.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can we approve the development plan minus the architectural sheets and let staff work that out with them later? They either have to comply to what fits the area or they get to building us.
I think it's still a question of whether it comes back to us. If, if it's purely, if we, if you're putting it in staff's hands, then we won't see it again.
Right.
So we're leaving it up to staff to make that interpretation.
If I may interject, were we, were we not submitting for the revised site, which, which reconfigured parking and the building height, the building design would not come before this board anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Well, have you, oh, I'm sorry, have you looked at the pattern book of the Gateway?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we also met with staff, and one staff member liked the design as it was, another staff member did not.
Well, we're not going to get into that, sir.
Having said that, we weren't going to, on just one person's comments, but the elevations that have already been submitted a couple of weeks ago for the site plan are different from these, and have, we believe have, have addressed the comments from the staff. That still remains to be seen.
All right, any other comments?
A couple of comments just from a housekeeping perspective. We can bring the site plan back to FMPC if you should choose to want to see it again. It is generally an administrative approval, but it can be brought back if that would be your motion. Additionally, the street standards cannot be changed by FMPC, so the, the comment made by Mr. Bachmann cannot be, cannot be overruled by FMPC.
Gotcha.
So, Mr. Chairman, is all we need to do is just add a parapet roof to it, or some shingles, or to make it look like the apartments out there?
I don't think we can get into that discussion tonight, to be honest with you, but-
No.
That's a bigger, bigger question, but-
The others don't have a parapet roof.
It's pretty sophisticated looking now. I mean, it looks good for Franklin, but that's the problem.
Look out there and see, as I say.
It's too sophisticated?
It's a beautiful building, you just don't get into that.
Okay.
So currently, the motion is for approval. Anybody wants to amend that motion, or we will vote on that motion if there's no other discussion?
Well, I have one more discussion. Would it be, the applicant be better served with a deferral time-wise?
We would be best served, since we've already got this submittal in for site plan, which is, is in this next month's schedule, we would be best served if, as Ms. Powers suggests, that the, instead of it being handled administratively, if it needs to come back to this board for that site plan approval, that certainly works for us, but it keeps us on schedule. We've already lost a couple of months with the scheduling through this as it is, so we're trying to, to keep this alive.
Okay. Is, is staff comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
So, I need to withdraw my motion and-
Or amend it.
Oh, no.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
To require the site plan to come back before us for review.
Second.
All right. It's moved and seconded to, to require the site plan to come back before us, not administratively approved. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And I have something else before we go to the main motion.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry. One of the other comments was about the, the fact that the, the area of disturbance wasn't delineated on, on this. I, I'm looking at the conditions of approval now. The reason that I asked specifically about that is that you may be aware of the history of this particular project, and there have been, there have been great problems with disturbance of the soil, I'll put it that way.
Sure.
And so, that, that was a concern of mine, that, that, that was mentioned in one of the conditions of approval. I'm, I'm assuming that can be worked out.
Absolutely.
This is very sensitive, though, I'm saying.
Absolutely. And we just wanted to make sure that we address that fully. If you'll, if you'll read, they initially had commented over the entire PUD, and we, you know, just had some confusion there as to how best to delineate. Obviously, we will delineate very, very clearly and keep the limits of disturbance, obviously, to our site only, and not only that, but within our site, to the absolute minimal limit possible.
All right, we're back to the main motion. Any other discussion about the main motion? And again, it is for approval.
Has this handled everything? The site plan, and what about the, what about the access point?
That'll be shown whenever you see it.
Yeah, it sounds as if we don't have the, the right or the ability to, to allow them to not, to, to not comply.
So whenever they say work with city staff, that means?
It will comply.
Make it, make it-
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Now, if, if we vote for approval, we're not necessarily endorsing the architecture as, as it is.
No, you are not, because the site plan will, will still need to come back through site plan, and I think the minutes of this meeting will show that we will be looking at the architecture again.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? So all in favor of the motion to approve this, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me, I get my wish, I get to come back before you again.
All right, item number 11, Stream Valley PUD subdivision development plan revision 1, 382 dwelling units and 1,600 square feet of office commercial. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the Stream Valley planned unit development is a previously approved subdivision with entitlements for 824 residential units. Sections 1 through 14 and 15 have been previously approved or in the review process. The applicant brought forth a revision for sections 16 through 19, which were previously considered the town center plan. What they're proposing is a 66 single-family residential units, 76 attached residential units in a town, townhouse, town home format, and 240 units of multifamily condo-style development with a 15, 1,600 square foot commercial property on 61.8 acres.
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience other than applicant want to speak to this item? All right, is there somebody representing the applicant?
Good evening, Commissioners. John Haas with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture, representing Stream Valley. We're in a agreement with all staff conditions and respectfully request your approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Move for approval. Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
If you notice, there, there was attached the minutes of, I guess, the original approval back some years ago. However, since then, I think this, the first of this year, we, in fact, we went back in 2012 and looked at this again and made some changes, and in 2014. I think that the approval from 2014 also needs to be included in this information, because it certainly changes some of these things that were originally approved. Oh, wait, I don't want to say it changes it. There were some things that were not, that did, that did not, that there was some discrepancy maybe between what some people recalled as, as being approved and, but were not, and so that we, there came, there came an agreement, I want to say in January of 2014, and there was, there are some other condition, there are some conditions now, and that needs to be a part of this also.
Yeah, if, if I may, my understanding is the reason why they're not in there is because those are board minutes and board actions that are required to be shown. There is a separate agreement that was part of that, and you are correct, it was originally reached in 2012, I believe, and then amended again in 2014. I don't believe we have any problem putting them in there, we just didn't get requested by staff, that's no problem.
That was the Board of Mayor and Alderman also.
Yeah, I mean, we have no problem adding them when we come back in, you know, post PC.
Because one of the things that deals with, some of you may remember, is the second access and the actual building of it, and so that's extremely important, because at this time, there's just the one access. And so I definitely feel that that needs to be included in any, any part of this.
Do you want to add that as a condition, applicant shall furnish documentation on the-
We'll just include it.
-board action?
Okay, is that, I don't know who made the motion.
I'm good.
Is that, is that okay? Yeah, to add that. Because as I say, that, that second access is extremely important and not necessarily easy to do.
Do you want to amend it?
If, if Scott's okay making his motion to say, motion to approve, to, but to also then add the agreements from 2012 and then the amendments of 2014, I think, if you're good with that and it's seconded, Michael, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good.
They understand that's what we're doing.
Yes. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the recently amended-
Sorry, there's one other thing I wanted to say, is that they are adding units here, now, it certainly doesn't come up to the total that's approved, but the thing is, though, that we need to be cognizant that, that means that there are other units that wouldn't be able to be built.
We are not requesting any additional residential units to the concept plan.
Right.
We're still at the same total.
Well, then, probably the entire development plan needs to be changed, because if you remember, the entire development plan also has these extra, the, the units that you're moving here, they've also got them somewhere else.
Right, we're not, and we're not asking for any more than what we're already entitled to, and, and I think, I think the only reason why that hasn't happened is because everything else has already been site planned. We've got site plan approval through 6 through 12, 13 through 14, 13 and 14, and 15's under site, that's the amenity center, so all the other sections have already had site plan approval.
Well, well, let me ask you then, what was their number of, what was the total number of units in that, in those site plan approvals that you've already gotten?
What I could tell you is that the site plan approval, in some cases, the plats are different than the site plan approval, so that's where we, we talked with staff and, and agreed that we didn't want to increase the units at all overall, and that at the end of the day, that would be our cap.
They, they have site plan approvals for some sections that they have, that they're opting to forego plating and getting building permits for at this point, so that they can move into this, into this other area. That, that agreement that you referenced from the one done earlier this year-
Right.
-makes everything sort of contingent upon building permits, and they're opting not to pursue building permits for some of these other sections at this time.
So that, there, even though you've got site plan approval, you have not filed the plats?
Correct.
And the site plan approval is good for what, one year?
One year.
Okay, okay.
All right, good. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number 14, Echelon PUD subdivision final plat, section 1. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, we removed this from consent, the applicant has agreed with us, and we provided that in an email to you all today to defer this item, so staff recommends deferral.
Okay.
And it is deferral with the forbearance of the, the timeframe on approving or disapproving a plat?
Sounds good to me.
No, but-
We need a timeframe, right?
Yes.
It's a, it's a deferral with the, with the forbearance of the, the approval constraint.
Because otherwise, it would become, it would become approved. So I don't know, how, how'd you say that before? I think we did that last month.
Well, I'm understanding that there's an email, so we would want to include that email as, as part of this record, that they asked for deferral.
But, but it's not just that they asked for deferral, but they also have agreed that they would waive the timeframe for-
By asking, by them asking for deferral, they are waiving.
Right.
Because they're the only ones that can ask, we cannot.
Okay.
I think we did have them say that.
I think in the, if I remember right, and I, and I apologize, I only learned about this one this afternoon, so if I understand correctly from the email exchange, Amy advised them that they had to, had to get the plat back within a certain amount of time, or they would waive their right, and then asked them if they agreed with that, and they said yes in the, in the email exchange.
Excuse me, if I may, it's a 60-day period, I have the email right here.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, what, what was-
60 days, deferral.
Okay, but that, but, but again, the state law is that if we do not vote on something, it becomes approved.
It becomes approved.
So that's the, that's the reason I'm being so specific about, did they waive that? Is it 60 or 30 days? I think it's 30.
It's 60.
60, okay.
Can you read the email, Scott? Do you have it?
Thank you for letting us know, deferrals are good for 60 days. Do you acknowledge that if you do not resubmit this plat within 60 days from now, you will have to go back through the full review cycle. Prep, app, review, initial submittal, resubmittal, FMPC. If so, we will notify the FMPC and pull the plan from the FMPC agenda. Response from Jack Whitson is, we understand and agree to continue with the deferral.
I'm sorry, say, say that again.
They asked for an indefinite stay?
I don't, I don't. That doesn't kind of say that they waived the, the 60-day state requirement, though, to me. I mean, are they here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then that'll be-
We'll get to hear them say.
How you doing? Michael Ray with Energy Land and Infrastructure at 1420 Donaldson Pike, Nashville, 37217. And on that plat, we were deferring that, but it was, the request was based on the city saying that- saying that, do we agree that within, you know, if we haven't submitted within 60 days, or if we haven't gotten back on the agenda within 60 days, then we would have to resubmit the package. Right now, we, it is our understanding that we can come back next month if we get a couple of things resolved. That was, that was our understanding.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your comment there. However, it is not that it's submitted, resubmitted within 60 days. If, if the Planning Commission does not take action on it either way, and a deferral does not let us off the hook, if we do not take action on it within 60 days, it will become approved by state law.
Okay.
And so, that's, that's the part.
I, I don't know if this would solve it, but what, I mean, our intent is to be back here in 30 days, and, and at the worst case, within 60 days to be back here. If we don't have it in 60 days, it sounds like what we will probably do is withdraw it. Can we do that? If, is what, that would be the action we would take.
So, so in other words, defer to our next meeting, and then at that time, you can either withdraw it, or-
Well, at that time, we could defer it again, right? Because we'd have up to 60 days, so we could come back to the next meeting and request another deferral if we had to.
Let me tell you what, remember now, we're meeting on the third Thursday?
Yes.
Our meeting two months from now will be on the fourth Thursday. The 60 days will have, for us to, for us to take action, will be gone by then. So, that's the thing, we've got to take action on it unless you withdraw it.
Well, I, I think right now, if you can give us the 30 days, hopefully, we'll resolve it, you know, and, but we understood the email, our, you know, our intention is defer for 30 days at this point.
If, if that's okay, then we would have the opportunity to vote it up or down if we had to then, or for you to withdraw it completely, not the deferral.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure this item is, was recommended for approval, was on the consent agenda tonight, there's some conditions attached to it that we have to resolve.
Yes, yes, I agree, but I think there was, their recommendation was for disapproval, because they didn't have it. Is that, is that right?
The recommendation would have been for disapproval because of some issues having to do with the sewer line.
That needs to be worked out.
All right, Anne, you want to make that motion?
And the motion on the floor now is?
There is no motion.
Oh, there's no motion, okay.
You got to start it ahead.
I, I move to defer for 30 days.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, right.
All right, good.
There's another one on consent agenda tonight, so that's what I was telling.
All right, it's moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. All right, item number 19, meeting scheduled for 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one mistake, we copied over the 12, 15, 14 deadline, so that would be for the January FMPC meeting. I copied that over from last year's approved schedule. It has been brought to our attention by some applicants that this timeframe from 12:30, 14, when they get their comments back, until January 2nd, when they have to resubmit-
That's a problem.
It's not very good. So, that, January 2nd is a Friday, we would like to change that to Monday, January 5th at 5:00 PM. Other than that, we're good with the, the remaining schedule for 2015.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move is amended.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Any other agenda items? Staff, anybody? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.